Thank you all. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we will go to our first agenda item, which is to hear, consider, and act upon the minutes of the August 19 meeting. Does anyone have any comments or suggestions and edits? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve? Manish?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
So moved. The minutes are now approved. All right, our next agenda item is update and discussion of the status of active projects. And Bill, maybe I could turn to you, and if you wanted to give us a quick update of any other projects you're working on. I know Capital, the Capital Projects team is working on some as well.
Sure. We, for the Rooster River project, the two big detention areas at the Fairchild Wheeler Golf Course and the Tunxess Hill Park area, right now, the last remaining hurdle is a 30-day, another 30-day comment period because of slight revision in the plan. Once that's done, we should be ready to go forward with the project. What I might do, in the interest of time and trying to get the schedule started as soon as possible, I will ask Purchasing to put the project out to bid, maybe a week or so before the 30-day deadline ends. So therefore, if there is somehow an issue, we can always extend the bid opening, but hopefully, we can get that out, and hopefully, we have competitive bids, and it's under budget, and we can go from there. Over budget, I may have to go back to the boards, but we do have some money, I don't want to say it publicly, some money set aside through some bonding money and some grants. So it should certainly be enough to cover at least one project and probably both. So we could certainly get started on the time-sensitive one, which is the golf course, and hopefully, we can do them both at the same time. If not, there might be a two-month lag between those projects. The, we had the section of, by Lynbrook Road, in the, I'll call it like near the lower portion of Rooster River, that one Keith Bradley had done a cleanup about four or five years ago. And anyway, that area got flooded because it went over the dike. And so rather than build up the dike with, there's trees and lots of access problems, to do something like that, we're looking at perhaps dredging, or I'll call it sediment removal. And so we're estimating an average of about two feet of sediment as accrued since 1962. And we would take that out. In some spots, it might be three feet, some it might be one, but it's about an average of two feet. And the survey has been complete, and I just have to present the plans to the DEP. We did some preliminary testing. At least there's nothing hazardous, but it is, the soil results were slightly higher than what's allowed for residential, and so therefore, the sediment does have to go off-site. We can't just put it off to the side. So that's going to cost a little bit more money, but at least it doesn't have to go out of state, apparently. So that will save some costs on that, rather than have to go all the way to Ohio or Michigan or something.
Just to be clear, there were a lot of other people doing the cleanup besides me.
Oh, yeah. But you help organize. So that's where we stand on that one. South Pine Creek, the tide gate project there, the, there, I've seen them in photos. They've installed the pipes. They put the flap, the flap gates and self-regulated tide gates have come in. There's one or two that were slightly damaged in transport, so they have to kind of fix that, but at least they're working on that project. Turney Creek project on Riverside Drive is still on schedule, and they're hoping for completion in November or December. Some of these updates you can find on the Engineering and Capital Project websites. So that at least gives you a ballpark figure of what's going on. And there might be a project I forgot about, but we're, if anybody has any questions, I can answer them, or send me an email, and I'll address them after.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Sure.
I'm going to just skip really quickly, because I think this could be a quick one to item number four. And I know Greg had been in touch with FEMA to see if there was any insights about the notice of violation.
What it comes down to is, every option I offered to them, they rejected. But they also said that they recognized that the problem is in their resources, not in us. So they aren't in a position to lift the notice of violation, but they're not going to pursue it, and they're going to allow us to proceed as if the notice of violation were not in place.
Okay.
Yeah, will that be in writing?
I think what I've got to do, I think I should formalize a letter to Attorney Pirates and have him make sure everything is there. But that, I forwarded you that email.
Did get that, yeah.
And what it comes down to is, you know, we can do, we can do, use it as if the violation were removed, but they're not going to formally remove it until they have the resources. I offered to, that we would have someone go pick up their people, drive them down here, drive them back, and somehow or another, they consider that to be a gift to a federal employee. I don't know where that comes from. I offered to pro bono, do a review, and provide FEMA with my review. They rejected that. But ultimately, it comes down to, hey, I'll take yes for an answer. If they're willing to forestall any actions on the violation and allow us to proceed, probably have, Attorney Pirates should probably draft a self-serving letter up to them based on this. I'll follow up with Attorney Pirates this week and see what we can do with that.
It's Pierce.
Sorry?
Pierce.
Pierce. Attorney Pierce. It's sort of spelled Pierce, but it's Pierce.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I think, I think one of the issues had been that the town had not felt comfortable proceeding with mitigation solutions and concept development until the notice of violation was lifted.
No, no, they were not, they were not going to allow us to put shovels in the ground. They said they'd be happy to start to evaluate solutions, but they were not going to allow anybody to dig until they got something from.
Well, if we can evaluate, we weren't even allowed to evaluate solutions.
Bill told me before he passed, and I think I sent you a note saying that we were allowed to absolutely, it's certainly in context of the.
Start evaluating options, okay. Because that was actually on hold as well. Now, if that's opened up, that's excellent. Okay, good. So actions coming out of item number four. Greg is going to work with Attorney Pierce to draft a letter, just confirming that we do have indeed the right to use it while they work through their notice of violation procedure. I guess I'm not sure if that's the right word, but process.
Yeah. That seems.
Sorry, Becky.
I don't know why.
The way they've worded it.
Maybe, all right. So, all right. So then, and I think the second action item is that we should be able to confirm that we can work with our consultants on concept development for the Penfield site.
Yep. That was the last word I got.
Okay. So the next agenda item actually is to do a review of the master flood mitigation and resilience plan. So I have a question. Bill or Anthony, are either of you able to log on to the Town Drive to pull up the maps? Because I did not bring hard copies, and we were hoping we could log on, and Emmeline was trying to log on, and she can't.
I'm on my phone, so I doubt I'll be able to.
Do you have a HDMI board?
Yep.
Computer.
I've not attempted that from my home network, so I don't believe I will be able to either.
Yeah, I think so. It's only way to connect into the screen. And for whatever reason, it's not, it's saying I'm on the network, but it won't let me, it won't let me go in. I don't know why.
Do you want to try mine?
The only way I could do that is if I log into your laptop. So I don't know.
All right. So I'm going to just save the minutes so far.
The only other thing.
I can go upstairs and drag them onto the TPZ website, and then we can open it that way.
From the browser. You want to give me five minutes?
Would that be the easier thing? Yeah, why don't we do that, and we'll put other items?
Yeah, what's the link that you sent, Becky?
Can we just look up the link that you sent?
Well, I was actually trying to find that on my phone, and I couldn't find it. I sent you all a Google.
But I can send it back to you.
Yeah, yeah.
So I had set up a flood and erosion control board Google Drive.
Do you want to send me that?
And I couldn't find it on my phone, but if you.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find, too.
Is that the email you sent us?
It would be an email that was a link to all of the actual maps.
I have it. Oh, to the maps.
The maps. Not the, not the one I sent out today, but the link to the maps, to the Google Drive that had all the maps stored on it.
I just sent it to you.
Did you send it to Emmeline?
Oh, I just sent it to Jamie.
So what we need to do is give her share access. You probably would have view access.
Why don't I do this? Because what I can do is, I can just go and drop it really quickly upstairs.
Well, and it should be in your inbox as well.
All right. She's going to go drop it. Why don't we go through a couple other agenda items and come back. And we can do this pretty quickly, and then thank you, Emmeline.
I think I have it, though.
Working app.
All the maps, Becky.
All right. So we could, we could just review them as a group here quickly.
Virtually.
Right, right.
We wanted to get it up on the screen, so it worked.
Maybe we.
She's able to drop it. So let's move to agenda item number five, which is Manish and his team.
Jameson, Caroline. So I think I have hit a roadblock here. So I did get the file from Ross. I evaluated that file. So all I have is the property value, no tax information. And unfortunately, just a couple of days ago, when I was talking to Ross again, he said, "This file contains all Town data. He cannot segregate flood zone versus non-flood zone." So that's one problem that I have, is that I don't know how to split the flood zone versus non-flood zone. I was able to get the key to identify which are, you know, residential property versus residential property. So he gave me that key, and I'll have to find out the tax data from Tax Collector, and then see how I can merge the two.
And the flood data. So we could maybe go.
Flood data I don't have, yeah. Seems to have that.
So I think the action that we talked about in the meeting was that we could work with Mark Hoover of MetroCog.
That seems.
Who is our GIS data support team, and ask him to print out a street level and property address level.
Then we can go to Tax Collector.
Is that exactly what we would need?
Yes.
So if he could print out a GIS data of FEMA flood zones by street and property.
We have the property address of every one of them.
We could then merge that with the.
Ask Tax Collector to give us the tax data, merge that together. The tax data, you're just trying to get the assessed value?
Yeah.
He has the assessed value, but not the tax, actual tax value. Either I take the assessed value and multiply it by the mill rate.
Mill rate.
But like, again, there are exceptions sometimes in the mill rate, or.
Well, you, well, all the town properties don't get taxed, so those automatically are zeros. Commercials are sometimes different mill rates, and then all of the things like the beach club are taxed at a very different rate than a typical mill rate. So golf clubs and beach clubs and things like that get taxed at different rates. So we would have to have.
That's why I was looking for the actual value.
We would have to have some key that would identify what the, which ones could go with the mill rate, and which ones have a special.
He has given me the key of all the property, you know, there's a classification. But again, if the GIS guys can give me that key, then we can map the key. Otherwise, if they have the address, then we can look at what's the tax collected on that address.
Okay.
Yeah, if we can't get the specific mill rate, we can use an assumption. If they can give us average residential properties in Town, apply that to the assessed values to get us.
We have the mill rate. That's not a problem.
Yeah.
It's more just that not everything is.
Calculated at a mill rate.
At the mill rate. There are some things that are calculated at different, different levels. All right. So it sounds like that's, that's good. We're, we have a plan. I can reach out to Mark Hoover.
Okay. So you will reach out to them?
Yeah.
Becky, as far as a student that was looking at the properties, I spoke to him back after we first met. He said he was literally going street-to-street eyeballing, counting stairs, assessing.
Sounds like that's not going to be helpful.
So, and he was then, of course, going to college, and then of August, and I said, well, but he thought you had access to the GIS program that he was using, because he was putting it into, because he had your name to say, yeah, you had access to his data.
Well, I did reach out to Mark Hoover.
Yeah.
And I asked him if he could download an Excel file of the GIS data that he had done for us.
Right.
That Manish had done for us. I did not hear back, so that's another reason why I could follow up.
If you're talking to him. I mean, it may just be sort of, I don't mean to use the word silly, but I mean, when all of us were elevating our houses, my husband and I counted how many steps into every house. You know, that's what we just walked the street, up to 14 or whatever. But, you know, that's not quite scientific.
Well, the other way, as Emmeline said, we could also sort of merge this with Building Department data, because the Building Department, you have to elevate your house to a certain FEMA elevation. So anything done after a certain date.
Right.
Has to have elevated to that elevation. So we could then do another merge with those houses.
So we have the elevation.
They would have, well, it wouldn't, we wouldn't even need to know the exact elevations. We would just need to know that if it were done after a certain date, all of those would have been done to a FEMA elevation.
Do we have year built in the tax data?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we have that year.
Year built and.
The year it was instituted.
A renovation date.
Yeah, it's clearly after Sandy, I'm sure.
Yeah, you're right. Most of that happened after Sandy.
Yeah. So I think we, that's sort of the third merge then, that we would need to do. Okay. Anything else on that that you need and that we can help you with as you progress that? Okay. So while Emmeline is pulling that, the mapping data, why don't we move on to the San Water issue that you had flagged for us, and then we'll go on to Keith Bradley's.
To keep it as organized as possible, I'll just read the email that you got. Fairfield is replacing bridges up and down the Mill River to allow increased water flow up to 100-year flood. A major problem arises at the San Water Dam. Designed 120 years ago, its spillway has limited capacity and could be in danger of being overtopped. It has never been overtopped. It has come close. I live upstream of the dam and upstream of Black Rock Turnpike, and the water in my yard has been higher than the capacity of the spillway of the dam. So the Black Rock Turnpike Bridge acts as a constrictor to help protect the dam. Also, Lake Hills, I'm also a past president of the Lake Hills Association, and Lake Hills is now conducting a land survey for the wing walls beside the dam to see what, what capacity that might be if the dam is overtopped. Bridges upstream of the dam are currently restricting water flow during catastrophic events, thereby protecting the dam. The bridge at Black Rock Turnpike restricts the flow during such events, and there is a very large flood plain, hundreds of acre-feet of flood plain upstream of that bridge, with little risk to property. However, if the full force of the river is allowed to test that barrier, the barrier is Black Rock Turnpike, a major state highway, could be in jeopardy. Work, work is being planned to replace the Congress Street Bridge over Mill River, which will increase the river flow capacity, even though there is significant flood plain upstream of that bridge. Same situation is present at the Merritt Parkway and Sport Hill Road bridges. There is an urgent need to protect the San Water Dam, a major infrastructure whose design capacity protects houses and schools downstream of the dam. Instead of removing in place protections, we need to enhance their capacity and their flood plains to protect the downstream inhabitants. Unlike the Rooster River watershed projects where, where we're spending millions of dollars to install water flow restrictions, these restrictions are already in place at Mill River, and we are planning to remove them to the detriment of houses, highways, and schools.
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt? I need to have your name and address.
Russell Jennings, 525 Winnipeg Drive.
Thank you. So Bill, what my suggestion is, is to bring this concern to our consultants, or if you have a response at this point, I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot. So I'm thinking that this is something that we take back to engineering and to our consultants to see if we feel that this is going to be a significant risk that's been pointed out to us.
Yeah, I will mention this to the consultant through our capital group as well. They're, they're managing the designs of Brookside, which is actually below the, or south of the downstream of the dam, and Congress Street Bridge. But with the Congress Street Bridge, though, usually the state won't allow you to open it up and flood or allow more water downstream. In the same token, they won't let you restrict it where it calls, what they call backwater upstream. So most likely, it's going to mirror the same conditions. It won't be better, but it won't be worse. It usually is the same conditions. But I can certainly look into that for Mr. Jennings and, and get a verified answer. But that would be my answer right now, because with Duck Farm, with Merritt Street Bridge, with Valley Road Bridge, they would not allow us to open it up, because then you're bombing, quote, downstream, and they wouldn't let us restrict it, because then it causes backwater upstream, unless those areas can handle it. And so far in Fairfield, there's very few, because of the density always around the rivers and the watersheds. We've never been able to do that. So my guess is that the Congress Street Bridge will have no impact, positive or negative, that they're going to make them do basically the same conveyance. But I will, I will check that as well, though.
May I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
When the Mill Plain Road Bridge was reconstructed, the capacity was just about doubled.
No, that's not true, sir. That's not true.
It's certainly much bigger than what it was, and.
It was, but, but the height of the bridge, the lower chord, before you used to be able to, I'm going to just say, the opening was eight foot by, say, 60 feet. Now it's five feet by 84 feet. You know, it's, it's not as high, the bridge is not as high as it was for the, for the clearance. It has a larger member because of the larger girders for the span, and so that is deeper. And as I said, I think on that one and another one, there were at least like six to 13 iterations hydraulically to make sure that it, it doesn't impact one way or the other.
May I make a couple of more comments?
Yes, of course, you can.
The Mill Plain Road during extreme floods, the intersection of Brookside Drive and Mill Plain Road used to flood over the roadway, stranding that house on the southwest corner of Brookside Drive and Mill Plain Road.
Yeah, I know the owner.
That house became an island. And it hasn't happened since the bridge was reconstructed. And also, the, the expansion to the 100-year flood is certainly greater than what is there now. And correct me if I'm wrong, but one of your engineers told me that the bridge that is being reconstructed on Old Road in cooperation with the Town of Westport, they allowed it, they allowed the bridge to be less than the 100-year flood capacity for whatever reasons that came up for that.
Anthony, you still online, if you want to make a comment? Otherwise, I will on that.
Um, yeah. I believed that bridge was allowed to carry the 50-year flood because the, to make it the 100-year flood. The elevation of the bridge itself would have, would have been too high for, for either side. The bridge would have had to have come up a little too high, so it was not feasible to, this is what I remember. I'm, I'm not sure. I might have to look into that.
No, no, that's, that's a good point, Anthony. Because there's an intersection with Gristmill on that Wakeman Lane one, that you literally, you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't construct it to the 100-year storm. The other thing that they have on that is, currently, it didn't make the 100-year storm. The water just went around and went through the intersection. And as far as the Brookside one, I can confirm that with, as I said, I know the person who lives in that southwest corner house. And my recollection, because I think I've seen it one time, one time, that where the water had gone through that intersection. So, but I will, I will look into all these concerns that you have. As I said, the, when you come through the design, it almost takes a year, because they go through all the hydraulic analysis with a fine-tooth comb to make sure. And again, they're only analysis, you know, but with the best available information comparing existing and proposed conditions. That's, that's what they will look at. But obviously, this is, for you to come out to a meeting, this is a major concern for you, and we will, we will get you the best answers we can.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you, Bill. All right. I'm going to turn us back over to item, agenda item number three, and we will get you a report, and we will get you an analysis. I'm not sure how long it'll take, but I'd rather have it done right. So let us look into it and get back to you.
And I think the analysis has to include the capacity of the San Water Dam.
I'm not sure they did the hydrolysis analysis on that, or did they? They would have done it on each bridge section.
On the bridges, but.
Well, actually, the flood insurance profile would have that.
It would have that?
FEMA.
Yep. The firm apps, yep.
Okay.
The firm app and the flood insurance study with the profiles would have that.
Okay, terrific.
That's correct, Greg. Thanks.
We will include that then as well. Thank you for bringing it up, and we will get back to you with the timing of when we can get you a proper analysis.
Thank you.
Back to agenda item number three. Thank you, Emmeline, for going up and getting the mapping. So let me just give some background here. So our consultants, Weston and Sampson and Race, have been busy doing inundation mapping in three different areas. Coastal area, they have, I think, 26 different maps, each showing a different storm level and tide level based upon projected sea level rise. Then they did a pluvial map, which was a blue spot analysis. And the blue spot analysis is basically a technique that they use. And Bill, correct me if I'm wrong here. Was this LiDAR data or GIS data?
I think it was LiDAR.
LiDAR data. What, Bill?
Yeah, yeah. The LiDAR data, our GIS is based on, and MetroCog is based on the LiDAR.
The blue spots.
The same.
So the concept is that they would see areas that would be lower, that would allow water to accumulate. Now, there were some issues with it in the sense that it, it doesn't really give you a sense of how quickly the water can seep down in. So it could be that these are very permeable sites, and they will accumulate water and immediately not be an issue. But assume then, at least this is where the water would accumulate, and then it will go down at some, some level over time. What they have asked us to do in these maps, in the blue spot analysis, and I sent this out prior to the meeting, they've asked us to look at the blue spot analysis and focus on particular areas of critical infrastructure, evacuation routes, shelters, hospital areas, and employment centers, anything that is a priority for the town that is showing a large blue spot analysis that could imply that it could have future flooding and a rain bomb. So if we, what we need to do is kind of take these maps and circle the areas that we want them to focus on. That was, that was their, one of their big things. Then they had a bunch of issue.
So none of these blue areas are any existing lake or water bodies?
So some of them are.
Some of them are.
Some of them are.
Yeah, if you go to.
So we'll have to take that out and not consider that, because right.
Yeah, you can see this is probably, this is the Mill River, right?
Right.
So there are some areas that are probably the Mill River as it's defined, and then low-lying flood plain areas around it.
So we'll have to take that out of our consideration.
Yeah. So I'm not sure the best way to actually do this, and whether we should do it as a group, or whether we should ask somebody to kind of identify evacuation routes, overlay evacuation routes, overlay shelters, overlay critical infrastructure on these maps as a follow-up on this. Or we could sort of, I think doing it as a group could be. Or we could sort of, I think doing it as a group could be a little cumbersome, but I'm not sure how else it's going to get done.
Do we have that data anywhere?
I mean, we...
The shelters and escape routes.
We do have evacuation route data. We do have...
Do we have a map that we can overlay on this and see?
Do they have KMZ or KML files that we can upload to Google Earth with this?
That's a good question. And that would be the emergency, I think we would have to ask the folks at the fire department if they had it.
Or, yeah, and also getting the blue spot map series.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, if you don't mind just leaving it there, just to let everybody know, what I see on the screen, there's Coventry, Coventry Lane, and there's a big blue circle right next to North Street, I believe that is, or, no, that's not North Street. Anyway, that's a detention pond, so I can tell that, that one.
North of Catamount Road?
Oh, yeah, Catamount, yeah.
That's the detention?
Yeah. Yeah, Catamount, that's the one. Before it was North Street, and then it moved down, so, yeah, Catamount and Coventry. There's a, there's a detention pond there. And some of these may be wetlands, we'd have to kind of overlay on that. But if you see, you know, a blue area going across intersections, or certainly a wider than the normal area, that's something to at least look into, yes.
Down here, maybe? Across intersections, yeah. Yeah, the other thing I think they had asked is, are there areas of flooding that we're aware of that are at least semi-regular flooding that are not identified on this map? In other words, do we know that there are intersections where we see significant water on a regular basis that might not have come up on this blue spot analysis? Because it could be that they just aren't enough of a depression, but they, water is channeled across those intersections.
Well, I know this has come up along Black Rock Turnpike, right? Where it's not necessarily something that we see all the time, but in significant rain bomb events, we are starting to see more flooding in particular around this section of Congress Street, right?
Yeah, and that seems, the red seems kind of dry, whereas we do see the flooding on a regular basis. Is it possible to isolate that for them so that they can understand where it's coming from and start to look at mitigation?
By regular basis, do you mean these bomb events that we've had?
A significant rain event, yes. A significant rain event where we, not like, you know, the major 2018, which would have been massive rain event, but on a regular...
Where it's not necessarily driven by, blue spots only going to take, it's only going to point out where your low spots are for most flooding events.
Yeah.
But when you have a backup of the stormwater system, because there's just not enough capacity for the volume rainstorm event that you have, that's, I think, areas where the consultant would like to know so that they can factor those in.
Yeah. Actually, not far from where your mapping is right now, off of Jefferson Street near Notre Dame High School, there is a, there's a road, Weeping Willow, which is the longer one.
This one?
Just, yeah, right there. Weeping Willow. Again, some houses aren't affected, but there's a line that is on a very steep slope, and if there's too much water, the line can't handle it. And they suffer some flooding there on Weeping Willow, as an example. And that's where a lot of this is going to be, where a lot of these storm drains or storm systems were designed for a 10-year storm back in the 1940s or 50s. And as you know, they've gotten a lot more intense, and now, you know, we try to design for the 25-year storm, so a lot of these, I'm going to say they could use pipe improvements. I'm not going to say under capacity, but they would be under capacity for today's storms or future storms.
So Bill, you've put roughly half a million dollars each year into the budget to do stormwater improvements, right? Have you, how do you...
No, unfortunately, it's not each, it's not each year. It was a one-time thing, and I have to, yeah. So I have to go back for more money, but we haven't spent all the $500,000, because we're kind of, being honest, we're in a little bit of a pickle, where when DPW does the drainage, they don't spend a lot of it. You know, they spend it for materials, they spend it maybe to repay, you know, when they're done or something like that. But it's mainly for materials. So we might have $200,000 left out of $500,000, which sounds like a lot if we have just DPW do the work. But if we hire a contractor to do work, the 200 will go on the very next project. So we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place there on what to do. I'm going to try to have them put another $500,000 on for fiscal year '27, just to cover ourselves for, you know, some of these storm system networks that can be improved without bombing people downstream, though, you know? Or where they can handle it.
I guess the question I was asking is, what is it that we can do internally through your department, through, you know, adding capital plan money for stormwater improvements, so that we can start to fix the capacity of these pipes versus what we want the consultant to do, to look at maybe nature-based solutions that would channel water into vials, quails, or rain gardens, or some other way to manage some of this? I mean, what we owe them is, what do we want them to look at, and what is it that we would do as part of our just capital improvement projects?
Yeah, well, when it gets time for the public outreach, you know, that would definitely be something that FERBA could do for sure. For this thing here, it's really just trying to compile it together, and then, you know, the only other thing maybe would be is to see if residents have photos, or, you know, if we do get, and hopefully we don't, but if we do get, you know, a, you know, two- or three-inch rainfall event, and we get complaints to come in, you know, maybe, as I said, to try to get outreach or have people, you know, take pictures or some video or something like that, just to have on hand. Unfortunately, a lot of people, when they take video, they think that the town is like an insurance company, and they'll show the water in their house, they'll show it in their garage, but they don't show where it's coming from, or the main source, you know, because and that's what we really need, you know? Oh, look, it went over the curb, or, oh, okay, here's a low spot in a berm that it happened to reach and then go through. Or, and unfortunately, even though DPW, they have what we call a header list, there's over 240 head walls that they, before a known storm, they'll clean them out. But in the fall, they'll clean them out, and then an hour or two later, they get all clogged again. And so sometimes, it's a clogged pipe that causes the backwater or the flooding. So it's really just trying to decipher repeated, you know, circumstances, and like you said before, had a couple of major storms, but if they're 100-year plus, you know, and it only happened those two times and never again, I'm not going to say, put it on the, you know, but it's a little bit on the back burner, because those are just so exceptional storms, and almost everywhere in town had that problem, or that watershed, you know? So hopefully that clears it up a little bit, but if Emeline, myself, or anybody from the DPW, Anthony or engineering, we can think of a way where FERBA will help us. We'll definitely let you know.
Okay. So here's my suggestion. My suggestion would be to get reasonably largish printouts of each of the blue spot maps, and to circle things like the Weeping Willow, or some of, any of the areas that we know have mentioned regular flooding, and use that to take back to our consultants and just say, here are additional areas that may not have been identified in the blue spots, but that we are aware of that flood on a regular basis. Would that make sense as a next step?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't overwhelm them, but certainly, certain ones that have crossed our radar, I've had some flooding lists from 2007 and to now, so I don't know. Give them some additional ones to work on.
So I think if, are you able, or Anthony, are you able to print out sort of reasonably largest-sized prints of these? And then have engineering first to sort of circle the areas you think, and then I'm happy to, or we could bring it over to emergency management and fire department and police and just see if they're aware of any other areas that have regularly flooded, that they've gotten calls from people. They could circle anything else, and then we could give that to, I think that would, I think that would address the request that they've given us, which is to...
Do we agree on the criteria? Evacuation routes, critical infrastructure, shelters, where water goes over intersections, anything else? Any other criteria that maybe we can get the same? Is it a one-to-two inch storm? Is it three plus? Let's try and land on criteria, so when we're asking the different teams, DPW and other places, they're all looking at the same stuff. And also, when they circle to initial it, you know?
Who, who circles it?
Right, yeah, so that we can go back to if we have a question. That might help us get to an answer that's maybe more actionable by the consultants.
So the consultants do, just as an FYI, the consultants on their maps, they are indicating two, 10, and 100-year storms, and the color values are, you know, it goes from, green is going to be those longer-range storms, present day is going to be those lighter blue, purple's going to be the moderate, moderate timeframe, I guess, a little bit more...
The ledge, yeah.
Go quite a bit out. So they are giving you kind of an understanding that, a future. Here's what we understand today, and here's what we understand would be impacted in the future.
Under the ledge, it also looked like it gave you inches, right? Is that three?
Yep.
So we should, we should say above the 3.5 as a starting point? Or, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out what we're asking these different departments. Are we asking them to circle where we know there's flooding when there's a 3.5-inch rain event?
Can I, as I look at it, there are blue spots, but they may not be flooding the road system. Does it matter? Like, should we only focus on where it's flooding the road system?
Yes, we only need to focus on...
Adjecency, maybe.
Road systems, emergency evacuation routes, shelters, things that would be critical infrastructure for the town.
Because there are blue spots that are next to the road, but it doesn't cover the road. What does that mean? Does it mean like there's a ditch next to the road?
It could mean that the roadway is at a higher elevation than those lower spots that are affected by LiDAR.
Yes. And I think, I think you bring up a good point. I mean, what we really care about is impact of critical infrastructure.
Yeah, say, moving people around safely, right?
Yes. So I think if we could also probably lay over the evacuation routes, the emergency shelters and stuff, so that those maps have those on them as well, so that we could, because sometimes it could be just the route to get to that, you know? If you have to go, you know, way, way around to get to your emergency shelter, that could be an issue, because you can't get across immediately.
Sounds like a silly question, but we're talking town structures, right? I mean, we're not talking about every church or school, or, I mean, certainly we have historical, you know, buildings within the beach community, this hall is in there when, you know, when Sandy hit, am I right? We...
It was pretty close.
Yeah, and, you know, our whole computer system was in the basement or whatever, the senior citizens are here, I mean, the fire department, the police department. But, you know, one might argue that, you know, the old church on the corner might be, it's not a town structure, but it is a historic structure in the town, so I don't know if we segregate those two options out.
Well, the other thing they were going to provide to us, if I understood it correctly, is that they've given us three different map types. They've given us pluvial, fluvial, and coastal. What they haven't done is combined them yet, and I think they were working to combine them. So there are times where, when the tidal impact can actually exacerbate the impact of a rainstorm, and I think that's, that's what we need to actually also see, which is when they start to combine all of the water impacts.
It decreases the aggressive water out of the water.
So, I mean, we, all we can do right now are work with the maps they've given us today, which are these three separate mapping things. And at least if we can put the critical infrastructure on there, put additional flooding that we're aware of, that they might have flagged with blue spots on there, we can put the coastal flooding on there that we're aware of. So I think we just take all of the maps and just overlay all of this on top of those, so that when they do, when they do their merging of those, and it's, I'm not sure exactly how they're going to do that merge, but they said they were going to, so. Have you met our DPW director?
Hi.
Hi.
Frank Snook. Good evening, everyone. Frank Ties, Director of Public Works, so I'm late.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you.
So I think, so I think the action for us is to help them by laying over the critical infrastructure. And I think the criteria to me would be just anything that would impede a resident from getting safely through an evacuation route or to a critical emergency shelter.
Yeah, but to your point, I think that noting critical or historical sites is probably not a bad thing. The question would be then, you know, how we prioritize once we have this list compiled, right? I mean, but I think, I'd rather at this pass, capture as much as we can from the collective people looking at these maps, and then whittle down from there, then say, ah, boy, we didn't look at that. So I agree with that point.
So this process is, so right now, our next meeting with them is on October 2nd. We're not going to have this done by then. So I think that, what I think they're expecting of us, they've put a two-hour meeting in the calendar, they've said that they want one hour to be sort of ruberine and one hour to be coastal, but we're not going to have this analysis done for them at that point. So we have a couple of options. We can either shift that meeting out, which would be my recommendation, and do this, and then come prepared with this to the next meeting, where we would actually discuss it in detail, and I think it would be a more productive meeting. Or we can have a meeting and get their recommendations for what they see are issues, then do our analysis, and then have another meeting. Right now, the project had allowed for nine meetings, so I hate to kind of waste a meeting just because they charge us for every meeting.
That's what I thought. I didn't even know, I didn't know about this second. I didn't know it was on there, but okay. And we have to decide how many people are going, or if it has to be noticed and things like that, right? I mean, that's what happened last time.
Yeah, so we would have the same issue in terms of a notice meeting. So my suggestion would be to, and Anthony and Bill, you're the new project leads. You may not be aware, but Rob Derry stepped down as project lead, and Anthony and Bill are now going to be leading this project. So Anthony and Bill, if you concur, I would suggest that we move the October 2nd meeting until we've been able to do this analysis, and then we have, would have a much more productive meeting.
What I would suggest, Becky, is maybe to reach out, we'll reach out to Eileen Gunn, Weston and Sampson, and find out. If I recall, they had planned this meeting, though, like almost two months in advance, because to get them all together was not easy, and that was one of the things, you know, I remember, oh, and Emeline, you might remember too, we had, have a department head meeting, and we're like, well, this is more, this is more important than that, you know, in terms of trying to get everything on board. We could just see that, but that was one of the things, is that it was really hard to get their, their team all together, if I recall. But you're right, we would have to have another meeting, certainly after our, you know, input. And as I said, just even looking at some of these areas, and there, some of them are not a surprise. We have, and maybe this is where they got some of the information, back, as I was mentioning you, to a storm of like 2008, 2012, obviously, there were, we did a similar map, but it was just in yellow highlighter of the areas that got flooded. So, you know, we can also look there and compare. The other thing, when somebody mentioned, you know, how do we know, you know, which one? To me, the blue was what? There was three and a half inches of rain, which mirrors the two-year storm. But if, like, there's an address on North Field and South Pine Creek, they got flooded four times in one summer, you know, to me, that, that's a highlighted area we have to concentrate on. You know, something like that.
Those are the things we need to circle, and we need to...
Right, exactly, exactly. And, yeah. So, I mean, certainly we could give them some, but maybe we'll give them a call and just find out what they planned on doing, what they need, and if they're like, well, we were just going to do a five-minute present, and I doubt this, but if they were going to do a five-minute presentation and then have the town take it over the rest of the meeting, then I would agree, we probably should postpone it because we don't have enough. But if they were like, you know, we were going to do an hour and a half, and then maybe give the town a half hour's worth, well, then maybe we still let them do it, and, you know, what if it's an extra meeting, or whatever, so be it, you know?
All right, I'd be guided by you on that. My preference would be to move it, but I hear what you're saying.
Do they publish an agenda before coming over to meet us?
Well, they, yeah, they gave us a kind of a list of what they wanted.
They gave us a list of what they wanted us to give them.
But this is October 2nd agenda, or what are they doing?
Yeah, very quick.
These are the questions they want from us for October 2nd. I just feel like, I just feel like it... I just feel like, I just feel like it wouldn't be as productive a meeting, but let me make that up.
Well, I, to be honest with you, I answered about seven or eight out of the 11.
The stormwater ones, I think we can answer. A lot of those, we probably could answer.
But, but number, number one is a big question, you know?
Exactly. I mean, the other options, we could cut the meeting down to answer what we can answer, and, and maybe do, instead of do a two-hour meeting, do a, you know, 45-minute meeting.
Right, right.
At least answer some of the questions. Because I think the other things that I'd like to get from them, because I think the next part of this project is to start the concept development for each of the segments of the plan. And they had flagged, Emmeline, I don't know if you can go to the one where they put those little stars, it was mostly on the coastal one, I think. They put a series of stars, it was the end of this presentation. These are the areas that they were recommending that they look at mitigation. A lot of them were on the peninsula, which I would recommend they don't do anything on. And I think we need to, as a collective group, give them some guidance. Yeah, this. So they basically had given us a map of hotspots, and these hotspots were where they felt there was going to be a significant water overtopping. And again, as I said, a lot of these seem to be on the peninsula itself, and I think, unless we feel differently, my recommendation would be to focus in other parts of, of our, of our coastline.
Yeah, realistically, the only thing we could do for the peninsula road, and again, as we, just like with everything else, that would be highly controversial, but that's been, in some cases, eight inches or maybe 16 inches, but that's about all we could do for that area.
Well, the other thing we could do is we could clean out the catch basins and the backflow coming in from some of the duckbills and some of the things that, where now we're getting a lot of water coming up through the storm drains, which is causing a lot of the sunny day flooding. And I think that's just because, you know, I don't know, mussels, things are getting in, allowing water to get in, up, and coming up through the catch basins at the high tides. And that's only going to get worse.
Right. Well, to be honest with you, Becky, I totally agree. In your email where you said some of the areas that I'm interested in, you had listed a, a bunch of different items to go over, you know, beach nourishment, to review the underpasses, things like that. And, and I have added on here to clean out the culverts near the, the shore, you know, like the old post culverts that we just did the stone facing for and retaining wall there. Clean out the tributary by South Pine Creek and Reef Road and Roland Roads. We do have a plan, a five-year plan, to replace a significant number of either tie gates, flap gates, or at least maintain them. And, and so, and then clean some tributaries. The only thing that we, as a town, have to be careful of, a lot of smaller tributaries, and even the rivers themselves, the town doesn't own unless we have open space next to it. A lot of these are privately owned, and so it's really up to the homeowners to kind of clean them out, and that's, that's another hurdle that we have to somehow address.
Can I?
Oh, sorry. No, no, go ahead, you're, you're the commission member.
I have a very, very dumb question. So these maps are, like, are they like permanent submersions off this area, or this is only like, it will be like this for a few days and then the water will recede?
These are...
And it will cause the property damage? Like, how much of it is permanently underwater, going to be underwater, because the elevation, water level going up and all that? Do we know?
Projected to the future.
Yeah, yeah, because like, if you're looking 100 years, I'm saying, okay, there, there are two things that we need to think about. Like, one is a storm that comes in, damages properties for a week or something, and then we've got to go do the repair. That's one set of problems. The other is some area that will permanently lose to the water. What do we do about that?
I think most of, if I can answer, and I, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think most of it, I mean, sea level rise is up to 20 inches, not guaranteed 20 inches, but up to 20 inches by 2050. So when you think about our current high tides, and you think about 20 inches on top of that, we will have sunny day flooding for most of our roads on a regular basis. But it will go down again, it will go down again when, when the tide goes out.
Full tide.
And it will be worse when there's a full moon, high tide.
High tide, low tide, so that means like it will be permanently submerged, because that area is done.
Well, it won't be permanently, but it will, you'll be able to drive easily at low tide, in and out, and...
Period. Yeah, but like, during, during a day, it will be, you know, submerged for...
There are times where you, I mean, presumably, if you look forward and we do get the full 20 inches, or even at the, at the 2050 level, if you pick the 2100 level, where it could be presumably even higher, and again, this is projection, it's not guaranteed.
Yes.
You, you could possibly expect to see a regular incidence of...
So the, so my question will be, what do we do about that? Do we want to remedy that, or do we accept it as part of the...
Well, that's exactly what we want to...
One?
Is there a way to mitigate that?
So that's one, or like, the other things are like, which happens for a week or two and damages a whole bunch of property, and we need to fix it? What do we do about that? Those are the two different scenarios.
I can give you a personal opinion, is that, you know, for a big storm, people need to elevate their homes, that's the only way that they're really going to...
But will that solve this problem?
It will solve the big storm problem, it won't solve the everyday...
Then everybody has elevated the houses, so we should be all good.
Well, a lot of people are elevating their houses.
The roads might be still a problem.
The roads, the roads potentially will. And so, and that's where we had talked about possibly raising some roads that would be evacuation routes, and, and also ways for people to get in and out during those high tide. And we have to decide as a town, do we want to spend that money? It's a huge cap base, 2,000 homes.
Phil?
Yes?
What was it, about 30 years ago, there was a significant elevation of Fairfield Beach Road?
Eight inches, I think.
Yeah, yeah, that was about, yeah, that was about 20, yeah, 20, 25 years ago.
Yeah.
The town raised, raised three spots, and they were able to raise two of them. One of them, I think, was almost like 18 inches, but the other one was only eight inches.
Yeah.
And the third one...
But it was a huge improvement.
Yes.
Right, but the third, the third one was never done because of neighborhood opposition. And so, that's where, you know, that's the area when we, right now, get the sunny day flooding, or we get, you know, a little combination of rain and a high tide, that, that area floods the roads. Luckily, it hasn't hit the houses yet, per se, but it definitely floods the road, you know, six, eight inches, certainly on, on one of the worst, you know, worst cases for the year, you know, the, the parry tide or something like that.
Foot and a half. I've seen it easily, a foot and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So I, I have a question. I have, I'm the planning director, so I have people who come to me with potential development projects. I have, as you know, the old lumberyard at the bottom of Thorpe Street has been previously approved, first for 55 townhouses, that didn't go forward, the cost to build that was too expensive based on the total number of units that they had. Then it was purchased by Mr. Sinto, who does a lot of development in Shelton and in the greater area.
Dan Milford.
Dan Milford. And he applied for 153-unit independent living facility in partnership with the Jewish Home. Jewish Home couldn't get their financing together, and so that project went away. They've come back now for another project, and they would like to elevate the grades on that site, a significant amount.
Where is that site?
That's right here, right at the edge here. And there is a town park that is at the end of, I think is, is it?
Rugby, rugby.
Rugby Road.
Rugby Road, yep.
There's a town park at the end of Rugby Road, and we were kind of talking through them, with them, what their elevation of their project would mean, is it possible? Do they run into floodplain considerations? But then I thought on it, and I thought, well, if we could tie into that and create a protection system here, you alleviate some flooding that could occur to downtown. So I wanted to get the consensus of the board whether, you know, these opportunities don't come along very often. This is a very big piece of property that could, even if they don't go above this estimated height, a berm at this location could protect portions of downtown, and areas north of it that could flood. If we could figure out how to do a private-public partnership to tie into those increased elevations, it could also, you know, because we get pretty steep along this spine here, right? And then if we could tie into that, and then tie into the development site, we'd have to figure out what that meant on the eastern boundary here, but it would get us part of the way, if you're kind of thinking about what that means for then moving along other streets where you, to, you know, to, Bill's point, like, even if you just elevate, start to elevate some of these northern roads that could tie into those, you could start to at least start to protect downtown, then move to a street further south, start to protect that area, and then kind of step your way down. But I don't know if that's something that we want to have the consultants talk about. I know within the contract, they, that's part of their task was to find out, well, what is permissible for us? As you know, Steel Point and Bridgeport, that was a site that was elevated, they took that out of the floodplain, because they were directly adjacent to, they didn't have neighbors south of them, per se, they were right on kind of a water body. I don't know whether DEP would feel the same way about being right up to a tidal marsh, but there's less development in the lower areas here. So I don't know whether that's something that's permissible, but this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity with this very large site. So I just wanted to...
We had really wanted to explore ways to allow market migration, which would obviously stop this, but to your point, it might actually protect the areas. But we'd also talked about, though, trying to build a berm across here, taking your high, high, the landfill, bringing it across here where there's a tide gate, bringing it across, tying it into San Francisco, which would also protect a lot of that up there. So I think, I think we should bring that up to the consultants.
Okay.
And I think we should offer, have them look at a couple of different options, where would be the best way, and then how could they bring it back down, if they wanted to tie it back down into the landfill.
There's a very small piece of private property that is between that and the park at the end of the road, but it's a very small piece of private property. So, you know, again, this is almost like a, it's almost like a clear shot for us. Woo!
Unfortunately, I'm totally in favor of it, at least investigating it.
I think so, too, yeah.
I appreciate you bringing it up.
So these are the kinds of things we could do on October 2nd.
Okay.
Still, is we could talk conceptually about these kinds of things.
Is, is the water source for the old lumberyard area, is the water source the marsh or rainwater?
Correct, it's tidal.
But we're, we're just replacing the tie gates at where the old railroad bridge was. That's at, that's at the interface between unencumbered Long Island Sound Water and that marsh. How that can be run around when the, when Long Island Sound really gets high, but...
Now, some of, some of that could be, you know, as you know, as you may or may not know, when it was either the lumberyard or the car dealership, they extended into the town's marshland, the town's open space properties. So they have pulled back their asphalt from that area. I don't know whether a remediation of that could be that they kind of bring back some, you know, they do, they berm, but then they bring back some, you know, they bring back that marsh.
Get some points to allow marsh migration.
Correct. So I, you know, so this isn't, I think, I feel like this is an opportunity site for us that just kind of fell in our lap a little bit.
Yeah.
But I, again, I don't know what DEP would say for, well, you've got to think about these impacts, like, this is, you know, I know for the, for the wastewater treatment facility, they, they had properties on either side and that still got permitted, so I, I don't know.
We did that because it was critical infrastructure.
Yes.
Yeah.
But HAVI did something similar.
Yeah.
HAVI did something right above, or the IKEA is, their engineers were telling us about this, where they had actually raised the elevation, you were there in that meeting, they raised the elevation several feet, and DEP was not happy, but they, they just did it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If you're allowing...
We're allowing public comments, yes.
Okay. I'm intimately familiar with that area, with the Sinto thing. I testified in front of the TPNC. When I was a kid, I lived on Bungalow Avenue, one of the three that went in. And the marsh was the dumping ground for the aluminum foundry, that was where the XI battery plant was. And they dumped lots and lots of dead sand laced with oil and minerals and all kinds of stuff. And I don't, I, I said that, you know, Sinto is going to have to remove and replace all of that. So I don't know if any of that was done. I see piles of dirt on the Sinto property. But did they remove all of the contaminated stuff, or does that need to be done?
I don't think that they have done that yet. I don't know that I, that we understand exactly what their environmental remediation plan may or may not be. What we have found to be the case with a lot of these brownfield sites is they remove some of it, they're able to cap some of it, depends on what it is. So once we get that information back, we'll have a better understanding as to what their plan is. That may be part of it in terms of them saying, well, we think we really need to elevate the site. So that may have been part of it without them...
That's part of the capping, specifics with...
I'm just saying, be, be careful of a partnership with a private concern where...
Yeah. Where there's contaminants that we can be.
Yes.
Well, the only, the only thing I meant by that was, if they are elevating their site anyway...
We can elevate it the other side of it.
And we could elevate the, the flares off of that site.
As long as that doesn't make a basin for, what, Granville Street, Bungalow Avenue and Thorpe Street.
No, those would all be north of there, so...
But, but that make a basin, where that prevent their, their flow, their surface water flow from getting into the marshes.
That's a question, that's a question for the consultants.
That would naturally be...
Yeah, that, yeah, that's a good point. That's, for the hardening project, we did have to have a mini pump station to pump the water out, because if you totally block it from going in, you also have the potential of blocking it going out. But that, as Emmeline said, that's something that their consultant could look in, or if they raise it a certain way, there might be enough pitch to still have it flow positive, and you won't need anything, but that's something, yeah, they'll have to look at if the, if this is even, you know, going to fly, so. But at least to have them look at it, I think's a good idea.
So I think we put that on the list. I'd like to actually go back to this chart again, just to validate that we don't want them to look at any of what they've called out as hotspots. So again, the only one I'd be a little bit nervous about is, they're saying basically at the 100-year storm, we could see an actual breach, which would allow all the houses on this side to not have any access. That feels like that's an issue to me.
They said it would take about almost 20 feet of sand out of there, is that what they said, 10 or 20 feet?
Yeah, they, they were calling that a, a significant breach at, at the 100-year storm with no sea level rise.
Where, where was that, Becky? I'm sorry, I can't see on the screen.
It's down on Fairfield Beach Road, right where it kind of juts towards the end where the Pine Creek comes out.
At the elbow, Bill.
Yeah, the elbow, yep.
So that was, I mean, both of these, I would say, let's not have them spend time looking at, but that's the only one that made me a little bit nervous, because it would really cut off a substantial number of houses from an access standpoint, but I don't know what others think, so I'd put that on the table for discussion.
Cutting off properties, it's worth investigating.
And I'm not sure what we can do.
That's the thing, what can you do?
Well, I mean...
Eventually, most, most people think the elbow is going to go at some point. We don't know if it's...
There's even, there's even money on it, Bill.
Yeah. Because, because in Hurricane of '38, there used to be more lots to the west of what you see now, yeah, right. And they lost that.
It actually used to go out here, and then it actually...
Yep, that's right.
Back, back in my day, flood and erosion, at the turnaround before the private road extends, which is the elbow, we put in, I had it stricken from the minutes, mafia blocks to protect the road, which are still there now, but they are anchored a little better.
No, they're not, it's a retaining wall. The mafia blocks got translated about 50 feet by Storm Sandy.
Oh.
And actually, they actually rebuilt that whole retaining wall.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a, it's a bona fide retaining wall now with a timber bulkhead on the creek side at that location.
And they, they reinforced the soundside as well.
Yeah.
And the only other thing, the only thing that they didn't actually flag, but they had flagged in an earlier thing was where the fire training berm is and you've got your tide gate there. At one point, that had been considered a breach when they did their original pitfield analysis. They haven't really put that down here as a breach issue.
They being race?
Yeah. They didn't flag it as a hotspot, so. Does anyone else want them to explore any of these other areas? Because we could, we could save their time by not having them explore these things.
Also, when you were talking about the, the water coming up from these storm sewers, there was a project that didn't go forward, but the former Public Works Director Frank Daniels suggested for the Kings Highway East area around the, where the, where the Board of Education meets.
Yeah.
Yep.
Putting in movable flood walls under I-95. And, and then, so that there wouldn't be the ponding inside there, welding down the stormwater manholes and letting the elevation push the water out against the tide. So, so you'd have a, a head from the uplands. It has to be near an upland area. And of course, north of Kings Highway East, there is an upland area. So you could get enough pressure from the stormwater there to push it out even though it is above the flood zone.
I'm sorry, I had the map down south quite a bit, so I didn't get this other start area as well, at Ash Creek and Old Puss Road.
Yeah. And, and that, that concept might work around Sasko Hill for the areas that are near Sasko Hill.
Same concept.
Same concept.
So I-
If that's allowed nowadays, back in the old days, a lot of things were allowed.
So it's all what DEP will permit?
Well, and, you know, the, the FEMA guidelines don't really allow you to, you, you really have to show compensatory storage and equal conveyance, that you're not expanding the floodplain either upstream, downstream, or on either side. So you really, you really have to show that you're not pushing harm onto other properties first.
Well, this will be pushing it out into the sand.
Which I think is allowed. You can just know that you're not pushing it to the side, but you're pulling it out.
As long as that flow doesn't flare, where then you are capturing more properties in terms of that flood event than the channel otherwise would allow during the modeled storm event.
So all these start areas, what do they want to do? Are they going to come up with a plan on what to do?
They want, they want us to only pick a certain number, right?
Tell them, they should look at these.
So basically, we have retained them to do two concepts for each segment of the flooded area. And all of the flooded area, we basically broke the beach area into 10 segments. And then we had each of our watersheds as another segment. So they owe two concepts for Rooster River area, they had two concepts for Mill River, for Saskobrook area. And so they, and Underpass and Downtown were the other ones. So it was 10 plus the three watersheds, plus the Underpass and Downtown. So they, they owe us concept development ideas for each of these areas. We can give them direction on where we want them to focus.
So they're saying-
They're just saying, hey, here are some concepts that we think we should look at as part of-
And develop the concept.
Because they've got-
I think Ash Creek is a great example because that's flooding post-road there, major roadway going back to, you know, major event if people need to get out.
Malone and Broome did, I think, a pretty good analysis of that whole section. They'd taken it basically all along Ash Creek down to Jennings' berm and along sort of the harbor. They, they had a, a plan to do sort of berming. And there are a couple of different ways it could have gone. We could have raised Turney Road, we could have tried to go along Riverside Drive, which would have been protecting a few more homes, but kind of going up and around. We never really solved that. And that was done back in, when was that, Bill, 2017, 18?
That sounds about right, yep.
A while back. So I feel like we need to go back and have them at least review that analysis and come back with a couple of recommendations and possibly, I mean, there's a lot of really good thinking. I, I hate to throw away really good analysis that was already done. So I'd like them to look at it and just say, what would they take of that? But I do think we should be having them look at a whole Ash Creek to Jennings stretch.
And that Malone and, Malone and Broome report, that's on the flood and erosion control website, webpage in files and documents. So you can see that entire report there.
And there, there's a couple trouble areas where, you know, once you cross into private property, it's like, what do you do? So they, they didn't really, Malone and Broome didn't really have an elegant, a totally elegant solution. They had some very good stuff on, on public land. Because we have open space there, we have the Jennings area. So there's a lot of actually town land there, which is very workable. But we never really solved, how do you exit up to Route 1?
So if south of Post Road, we are saying the plan or the solution is just elevate the houses? If that's the only solution?
I, I have some heart for, I'll give you the personal point of view.
I actually look at, this whole area is all private. I'd love it if we could figure out a way to do it. I'd like to see what would happen if we put, you know, beach nourishment and extended to Jennings so that there was a whole berm all along. What would that cost?
Yeah, exactly. That's what I was thinking too, yeah.
Another way to think about it is maybe we just take this area, which is, I'd like to include the school if we could, but the history museum, the Old Town Hall, and basically all of the kind of what I'll call more public infrastructure. I don't know if you berm it, I don't know what you would do, but what could you do to protect that from, you know, what we're anticipating a sea level rise and stuff? So it could be that elevate down here, protect the town infrastructure. But I think if they looked at both of those for us, gave us cost analysis, we could evaluate which one seemed to make more sense because-
I think so. I like that because I was thinking about the berm structure also on the coast.
Yeah, I mean, it would-
That is worth considering.
You'd build out a fairly major berm, sand berm, and, and you might have to do beach nourishment on a regular basis, you know, which would be cost-
Very regular.
An ongoing cost.
Very regular.
No, seriously, and we, we can't look at this as a one-time cost. We have to look at this as an ongoing cost. And then we have to present that to the town. But I think-
Were there any of these Magenta hotspots identified further up? I mean, it's good that we're talking about the coastal areas. You talked about some of the watersheds.
They didn't do a hotspot analysis for the watersheds. So Race did one part of this analysis and said they did these hotspots.
Coastal.
We did not get a, a pluvial or a riverine hotspot analysis. It's kind of in the, it's, it is kind of in the blue, the blue spot analysis. Because again, if you look at it, it is giving you projected rainstorm events, the bigger rainstorm events. And that's just shown in a different color, coloration of the mapping.
So that, that extends up towards Rooster River stuff or it goes up towards?
This is the whole town for the blue spot analysis. So there are a series of-
12 maps.
Well, 11 maps for, 12 maps, 11 maps for this. So they did the whole town for the blue spot analysis. And they just broke it down into different segments. But they didn't hotspot it. And maybe partly because they didn't know where the critical infrastructure is. So if we can then provide the overlay of critical infrastructure, they could say, here's where we need to focus. All right, so we've, we've talked a lot and-
Real quick, Bill?
Yep.
To certainly back, you said that you were looking for documentation, better documentation of flooding events, not to wish the future. But if you could put that into a, a small, simple, here's what we'd like to see if there's flooding in your area. And I can see about getting that out to our constituency up there.
Yeah, the, the key thing for all this, and this is what hopefully the report will, will show, is that the whole master plan to put it all in one spot, to identify hotspots, to hopefully give us at least some concepts that we could possibly, you know, deal with in the future. Obviously, funding is going to be huge. And unfortunately, a lot of this stuff, in order to get any grant funding, they want you to design for a hundred-year storm plus one or two or even three feet, depending on what the structure is, you know, free board. And a lot of this stuff is going to be extremely expensive. And hopefully, this report, if not, it might have to be after the report where we take a look at it and, and see what's prioritized and what we could get the most bang for the buck.
But I was asking a different question. It's, it's, you, you said there are some documentations that you would like to see.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I was just, I was just doing a summation. Yeah, I'll send you something.
If you could put that, something together, we get that out to people, I think that might be really helpful.
Yeah, and, and again, you know, anybody that gets flooded, including myself and probably half the people on the board, you know, you get flooding in a basement, you have to take the, you know, all the stuff out, you gotta let it all dry. You might have to replace drywall because it soaks up like a sponge. And, and it's a pain in the neck. But, you know, there's only certain things that we can do and where it won't affect other people. And that's hopefully what the report will show, is that we are able to do certain things, prioritize certain things where we can at least improve the situation and if nothing else, reduce the chances or potential for flooding. And, and at least that will be a positive, so.
This, this actual project did not involve a full cost benefit analysis.
No, I know, that's why I said the next phase probably, yeah.
But it did include level five costs for 30 concepts to any-
Okay, yeah, right, that's good, yep.
So at least we'll have a somewhat of a, and I don't, I don't sure if level five is like a plus or minus 40%. I'm, I'm actually sure, you know, frankly. But anyways, we are getting a conceptual cost. We are getting 30 different concepts, you know, to any of the 15 areas or we can push some into other ones. But they're, they owe us 30 concepts with level five costs. And then we'll have visuals of those. So I mean, I think, you know, we're going to have a good sense of this. And I think our job, as Bill said, is to come out of this with a master plan that looks at whole-town flooding with a prioritized list of solutions where we're going to get the most bang for the buck.
Yep, thank you.
Makes sense for us to request taxpayer funds. Now, the other thing is, it doesn't all have to be done through grants. It could be that we bond some of it and we do special taxing districts for some of it. Special taxing districts are areas where we can choose to, you know, have certain geographies who will be positively impacted by it, all have like a 30-year. And this was done back when we did the Groynes, I think, and Seawall, right? I think, I think the town paid a third, the residents paid a third over 30 years. And at that time, Army Corps paid a third. I don't know that we'll get Army Corps to pay any of this, but we could, we could do something similar where those that are most impacted are in a special taxing district and pay part of it and the town bonds part of it. Because frankly, anything we do that protects our beaches is a town-wide issue. It's, that's not just the people who live down there. That's a asset for the whole town to enjoy. And it's not fair to have just the people that live down there pay to protect the beaches. But it has to protect the beaches.
Are the, are the 30 concepts, are they geared to five-year, 10-year, 50-year, 100-year? Is there, is it?
The way we had structured it was we had put on the table the concept that we're not going to protect the town from major hurricanes. We're just not. It's just, it's too expensive. We would have to have seawalls eight feet high down at the, down at the beach. No one wants that. So we said that we would affect to an elevation of 12. What elevation 12 will do is get us to probably roughly the 25-year storm for the most part. So we would protect ourselves to the typical nor'easter, a 25-year storm. But a, a level one or two hurricane could overtop that. And I think it needs to be clear that we're not promising 100% protection here. It's too costly. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's, but just one question, I just understand. When you were talking about the elbow, that was a 100-year flood? So if that, if we're not going to worry about 100-year flood, then is that, is that different? Does that go against what we're saying that we're only looking at 25-year?
We'd say that we're not going to look at that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
The only thing that scared me about that is that's, they'd be cut off completely. I mean, it's not like, you know, they could be built. They would lose those houses. And that, and that's an actually thing we could do for your team. You know, we could say, here's what the tax assessed value is we will lose at the town if those houses are not-
You have a free boat.
Easy way to put a value on that.
Sounds like it hasn't happened before.
I mean, I, I think we'll have to make bets, you're right, at some, some things will, you know, some things will- we can't just-
And it's the same thing with Rooster River. We're, I mean, we're going to put some things in to mitigate the level of flooding and damage, but we're not going to protect everyone from everything. And I, I think it's really important that we message that as we talk to the public, that this is not, you know, a nirvana, that we're suddenly going to have no flooding anymore. This is a, we're going to do the best we can to minimize-
You can be totally wrong.
Yeah.
Mitigation, not perfection.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just, just in perspective, in the 1990s, there was a town up the coast, Old Lima or somewhere around there, that assessed everybody in the, their waterfront flood area and said, we will assess your house now. You can live there as long as you want, but when you move out, we pay the assessment of the 1990s. And so the town acquired over generations all of the flood areas. So they eliminated all of the infrastructure that would be affected. And we proposed that to the beach community in the 1990s. And of course, it was thrown out.
Sort of too bad we didn't because back then, those houses were a lot cheaper.
Not doing housing in the 90s, I mean.
Now, we could-
It'd be impossible.
Oh, my God.
Well, depends upon inflation, doesn't it?
Uh, I guess. Anyway-
I feel it was expensive back then.
That's true. All right, so I think we, we spent an hour and a half, I think we have an action plan. Bill and Anthony are going to go back to the consultants and just say, ask for a little more clarity about what they hope to accomplish in the October 2nd meeting, how much of the, of what they are asking for, they need us to do, and is it still worth having the meeting? We're going to print out all these maps and work with both the engineering and Emmeline to circle areas of concern and then take that over to emergency management and flood and fire, also to just flag critical- Just give them the link to, if you want to keep it on the plan and zoning website, just send them the link and just tell them to tell you where the, where their hotspots are.
Could they circle them on the, on the, on the actual?
If they know how to use their Adobe tools to do that, I guess. If they download it, they could. But, I mean, otherwise, they could just give us a list if they, if they have that information.
Do you think that's the easiest way to do it?
Probably the easiest because they could access, I mean, I just went on the website and it's there on the website now. Instead of having to kind of transport paper around, I would say it's probably better just to, you know, see if we can get them to-
To do it, that'd be, that'd be fine. And that way, they can all do it at once too.
We don't have a delay.
Can we see it on the website too?
You can, yeah. So if you just go to, so this is the TPZ page. If you just go to link to TPZ agenda files, I just, I just popped it in there. So it's, it says basically resilience August 26th meeting and resilience September 18th meeting. And it has all of the, you can't open the PowerPoint, you'd have to download it, but it has all the visualizations, so all the materials that they provided to us, it has within those meeting dates. So you can look at both the visualizations and you can look at all of the, all of the blue spot maps. So they have them in large format, 11 by 17. And then they also have the, what's this document? I can't remember. The pluvial, pluvial flood risk presentation that they did for us, that's also in there in terms of how they got to the data that they looked at. They looked at the different watersheds.
One of them is not user-friendly on a computer.
The what, what is?
A lot of those are very hard to read on the computer. They've got multiple identities that are almost indistinguishable on the computer. Plus, they're probably structured, not this so much, but the mappings. They're structured in a portrait format and probably scheduled to be like on 24 by 36 and you're looking at, it's, and then you could look at it to zoom in and you can't see the legend at the same time. So you're constantly trying to play back and forth to see what it is you're looking at.
Well, they did, they did have them for the blue spot.
And the race ones have turned 90 degrees.
Yeah, so you just have to rotate those. But the blue spot ones, they do have in those 36 by, to your point, the 36 by 48 size. And then they do have them 11 by 17 formatted.
But they're going to need to blow them up to see where the roads are.
I mean, I think it's useless. You can zoom in.
I tried navigating it, it is not fun.
Really? I, I did-
I, I didn't think it was that bad. I thought it was pretty easy to just kind of zoom in and then.
I'm a little old school, I'm more of a paper kind of guy.
Okay, but it is, I mean, it is possible. You could definitely zoom in and move around the map, and then be able to see the streets pretty well. But I think for most of you, you're going to, you're going to work off those neighborhoods that you know, so maybe some of the maps aren't as, they're not as compelling to you, but the ones in the neighborhoods that you live in and that you know about, you'll be able to comment on those. The only thing I would say is if you're commenting on them, on the, on the key, when you scroll down, you can see whether it's map number one, map number two, map number three, it'll be circled in red, and that's probably how I would reference it if you send Becky emailed comments. That would be helpful, right?
Well, if we're not going to do hard copy maps, then yeah, we need to either get comments or you guys need to circle maps, and then we somehow need to combine them all. I mean, I'd like, if we're going to do online, everyone should access the same maps and do the circles off of those maps. I, I think it would be counterproductive to everyone do their own thing and then try to feed in comments. I think we, we have one, if you want, if you're offering up the TPZ sites, site, everyone should just go onto those maps and do the circles, and.
I think you'd have to download it, though, in order to do that.
You can't edit them.
You can't edit it on a webpage. You'd have to be.
I wonder if we should just do paper maps, then, just because, and just have them sitting in the engineer.
One paper map, and then everybody sends you comments and.
For the 20, for the 20 people who are going to comment, have them call Anthony. Walk with them on the phone.
Everyone, I'm going to have to go. My charger's having an issue. I'm down to 1%, so I didn't want to be rude and cut out, but thanks, everyone, for valuable information. All right, we'll keep in touch. Thank you, bye.
On the second, what time is this meeting?
10 to 12.
Can these maps be put into Google, Google Slides? So if it's on Google Slides and it's going to the G drive, and everybody can, everybody can comment on the G drive?
You guys all have it on a Google Drive.
It's on our drive.
You, you were all sent it a couple weeks ago.
On the road.
Okay.
So we've got it, and if we want to consolidate comments, if people, I mean, the problem is if people were going to say specific roads, like I, I didn't know where, what was this? Weeping Willow Road was, so it would take me a long time to go find Weeping Willow Road, and then write it, whereas you guys obviously are saying, oh, right there, Weeping Willow Road. So that's why I want people to do the circling.
They should put tick marks on the sides of the map so you could say A15 or B25.
Here's the map now. So if you're after the map.
Yeah, that's. Because it's pretty segmented.
It's easier somewhat.
Let me follow up with Anthony and Bill and decide what is the easiest way to do it, whether we feed it all into Anthony, if we.
On this structure, that's something we need to do. Yeah, for the map. There's no coordinates like A1 or something like that.
No, it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to work.
And do the maps have a coordinate, like where you can narrow down a square? They don't have that.
The segments are pretty small, so we'd be able to find it if you said, on map number one, Weeping Willow Road in this intersection, that would be, we'd be able to find it. Between Bill and, I'm going to speak for Bill and Anthony, between Bill and Anthony.
All right, I think that is our action plan coming out of today's meeting. Is there anything else that we want to discuss about the master plan?
Comment that has occurred to me. You're focusing on the private property, especially along the beach or whatever, but also you have to think about protecting sewer, water, and gas lines that are down there. Because the storm will wash those up, break those up, and that would be a triple catastrophe.
Those are all under roads right now, right? So if they're protected.
Until the roads.
Until the roads.
Right, yes.
Well, we actually saw the roads turn up in Sandy. We had asphalt landing like this down there.
Yep, so, I mean, that whole area is, I'm pretty sure, I, I think they just extended the gas line down Thorpe Street closer to Old Field Road. So you have all of that infrastructure. The electric is above ground, and that's easier to repair, but the rest, rest of it causes big time.
Sandy, they cut the gas, gas off because it was.
Yeah, you have bridge crossings, too. A lot of times they're out of the water, they're hanging off the side of the bridge, so.
No pressure, no pressure.
No pressure, no pressure. All right, I'm going to close out the meeting unless there's any other business which people want to discuss. I know you had pulled together some analysis of temporary structures. I think what I was hoping is that you'd take that to the consultants and they can evaluate that.
That's fair.
If you want to share it, what, separately.
I was just trying to get consensus from people and.
Seemed like a very reasonable thing.
People wanted to see if there was some input from folks individually. We don't have to do that, then.
Going back to the presentation you made some months ago, yeah, and I thought it was a good solution, it was cost-effective, and I thought it was a mitigating factor for those neighborhoods that were impacted.
So how do we, what's the next step?
I think the issue is with temporary structures is you have to make sure that by creating a temporary structure, by channeling the water, it doesn't impact someone else.
If we only knew the DPW guy.
So I think that's why I want, that's why I want the consultants to.
My concern is the same as it was before, is if it's something that town staff can handle and implement, it may be workable. I'm very concerned with, as Keith presented before, maybe make the, make the panels available to local residents to use. I'm just concerned about the potential liability that's going to be transferred to the town, and not to mention shrinkage.
Shrinkage.
We started out with 20, it shrinks down to 15, it shrinks down.
Well, you have, someone's on vacation, and four don't go out there.
You have the model of the volunteer fire in many, many communities that have handled this kind of problem. But the.
Sure.
Sorry, yes, sure, right, for sure. But the, and you have to build in a redundancy. I mean, and, and our consultants or the people who have other places that do this can probably tell us what that level of redundancy needs to be, right? You need, if you need 10 people to do it, do you need, you know, 30 people available on the, on the list? But I think there are, given what the concerns are in the neighborhoods, there are going to be plenty of people who'll be more than happy to, to volunteer on that, is my, is my guess.
So there really are, are two issues. One is just understanding where the water will get channeled, and will that impact other properties?
Correct.
Which.
Which is into the, which is into Owen Fish Park, which is a huge.
Well, Owen Fish is, it can also be overtopped. So if we channel it all into Owen Fish, and then Owen Fish gets overtopped, it then gets all the apartments below.
But it's all about, all, it's all about time. It's how long does it spend?
Concept with the dam.
Yeah.
Right, how long does it spend in Owen Fish? The second is that, that the.
Well, how much can, how much can Owen Fish absorb and take before it overtops? Because even, you can channel it all in there, and then it rises, and it goes over then the barriers and goes into the neighborhoods.
So the consultants could help.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, so I, so I.
I'll argue that point.
So I think, I think we have to share the concept with them. I think they need to evaluate it, and I think they need to evaluate on will it channel the water.
Sounds a good way to do it.
Other ways, and then I think the liability issue is a good one, and frankly, you know, should it be town staff, and can the town support that? They're going to be running around doing a lot of other stuff during a big storm. So, you know, do we have the capability to manage something like that? And how would we feel about a, a, a trained resident group?
Sure.
I don't know if that would be acceptable to the town or not. So these are questions.
Here's the managers.
Yeah, so field association buys theirs, that BRA buys, you know, sells their own, because the town has nothing to do with it.
Well, I could see them for like Roland Petway, I mean, I think all of those would.
Yeah, we're talking about the box walls, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're pretty, they're red.
The other, the other potential would be for.
Mustang colors.
The town has a subscriber to, to give the mass buying power of the town if you wanted this on your own property or even your own area, that that would be a way to get the price down for each of these. So instead of buying as an individual, you had, people, people come in and say, there's 100 people want to buy 1,000 of these, then that would make the price on that, on that lower.
Residents could buy it, and residents could purchase from the residents' associations. Fairfield Beach.
But, but this has to, you have to look at the whole channel, because you can't solve Fairfield's problem, but create a bigger problem for Bridgeport. This is a shared riverine environment, so, you know.
Yeah, well, this, I mean, this would, anything that delays water going downstream in an event that is over in two hours is something that is going to be positively impactful on everything downstream from there. Right, in other words, you have.
If it blocks it upstream, so that's part of the analysis.
No, that's not what it does.
It, it's more shaping where it runs versus blocking. It's not, it's not truly like you saw.
It's not stopping it.
Not stopping it at all.
Channeling it, but that's where if you channel it to a place that can't absorb it.
So if you send me, if you send me an email.
No, I've seen your, I've seen it.
I've seen it.
I still have concerns.
If you would send me those, because I really appreciate it.
Well, again, you have to show zero rise, right? You have to show that in protecting some properties, you're not negatively impacting others, and I think it's been an anecdotal conversation. It hasn't been one that's been proven one way or another, and until we prove that one way or another, as the floodplain administrator for the town, I can't allow it to proceed. And that's why you first have to show no harm to other sites, and I don't know that we've gotten that far. So that's what we have to do first.
But I do think we could do things like pilot projects, like if we were to have a big rainstorm, we could try it and see where it's channeling, and then you can take these away immediately.
Stack them like.
Seconds, exactly. So I mean, that's how.
By using the consultants to understand the impact based on the amount of rain and how much you're talking about and the flow, and it shouldn't be hard calculations, they've got all sorts of people who understand hydraulics, right? And so they're going to be able to tell us if there is harm.
If there is, how, how much water would it be, before it became hot?
It is a hotspot in town, and it's inside the scope of the, of the overall project, but we have to understand, to Emeline's point, that it's not going to, it's not going to save here and then blow out down here.
And I think, you know, I think the concern is that rainstorms aren't like what they used to be. They are very flashy, right? And so we just don't know where that eight, eight inches is going to fall. It could be two inches in one place, all within Fairfield, and then it could be eight inches in another place in town. So that's where a system like that, that's temporary, not permanent, only designed for a certain height of flow, it's, it's challenging to know whether or not you're going to have those impacts, because you don't always know, especially in rainfall events, what you're really looking at, because it's just so unpredictable now in terms of that potential rainfall event. So that's, that's the.
Except that we know that in the rainfall events, in the four that have occurred, they have all had a similar pattern of, of what we've described and gone to great detail to describe, and the, well, I'll.
And the cost benefit is actually very positive in the sense that these are very inexpensive. So if we could figure out the hydrology of them and do a plumb.
Static application is very easy. Let's say we know this building is prone to flooding, we can, we can anticipate what it's going to be. We could put perimeter berms around it and know what the, and we can know what the impacts are going to be offsite. With a dynamic flow, where you don't know what the intensity is going to be at this location, at this storm, and what the impact is going to be downstream, it's a lot more difficult, there's a lot more moving parts. And my big concern, and I think, I think it's good for Emeline, feel free to tell me I'm wrong, is first, the do no harm, and second, we don't want to put a liability burden on the town for actions that are totally beyond, beyond control of the town by using others as proxies. And that's a very big concern of mine, and especially in a dynamic situation, anybody that has damage is going to say, that damage was caused by the town deploying that, that methodology upstream from me and directing all that water into my house. And then it's going to be for the judge to decide.
It's, it's an issue.
We get, we get calls when people put too much mulch on their planting beds in highly flood-prone areas, so, you know, so again, I, I just, it's, until, until they fully model it, until we know better, you know, I think it's, anecdotally, I've seen it, too, it looks very effective, but we kind of need to know, we really need to know, because it is a hu, I, to Greg's point, I think it's a huge liability.
There is one way to know, and that's to do nothing, and then we know exactly what will happen.
Does the legal profession still recognize act of God?
What if you alter the channel and the environment? That's the problem.
Well, then we can't have berms in, that are being.